Hafade, good afternoon. The Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security and Senior Citizens now reconvened this public hearing. This is our, we're reconvening from this morning's 9:00 AM hearing. I'd like to, well, first of all, the agenda for this afternoon is first, a confirmation hearing on the executive appointment of Dr. Nathaniel Berg to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and also confirmation hearing on the executive appointment of Mr. Philip J. Flores as a public member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and finally, an informational hearing on the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I'd like to recognize Senator Nerissa Underwood and Senator Torres. Thank you very much for joining me. Also want to recognize former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson for being here, and a former senator, Uncle Alfred Israel as well for being here. Thank you very much. So we'll start off with the appointments of Mr. Berg and Mr. Flores. We can get the sign-in sheets, and if you do wish to provide any testimony, I ask that you please sign up on this, to the table here to the left. What we'll do, just to make things go a little faster, we'll go ahead and take your testimonies if you have one for both of them. The committee will entertain both of them at the same time. Okay? So if I may call up Mr. Joseph Arturo Cameron, Uncle Joseph. Sam Mabini, Senator Sam Mabini? Oh, okay, she's, Mr. Israel as well? If we can help him. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Uncle Alfred. Whichever, he can start first.
Si Dzus Masi, senador and senadoras para finatun vizu pa' aguni pa' un ekonok estibgo na importante na na appointment para idos kabazeros, si Dr. Berg, and si primun Phil Flores. Familias si Phil sa familia kavisa, sa sinanolo ki familia kavisa. Loti put enau na matusu ni pa' beitistigu. Hu matusu sa atmanzu ma'tso'tzu gestina kasinso'tzu para i health and welfare atman antes ti pum residentizu para departmentu ni kaha'au guinansamoru. Nu ginin matatsunatzu lokui ki edzi ki mafana'an gi tempun guantis, gi tempun antis, edzi i Guam Licenseure Commission za gua hu hu medap edzi i mafana'an gifnu englis i credentialing. Zautungu i minaput, utungu hafna papit hu mafana'tzu zautungu na ti parata'atan edzi gifnu englis i personality. Di plusi sa ti ti miscongenialti estina contestitu. Estina klassinso'tzu propio na palma atendi itautu ni malango. Za gofma put este i tempo. Gofma put manioda ma'ulik na medikuni pofan maktu kuatu ginislata. Ti mege'it na tauto. Lo para tada na cetnut gua hasempi necesidad no ma'atendi itzetnut ne'atzo fan homlu manidu. Za esti dos na kabazero uripara cetzutni'a gi tempun antis. Si Phil Flores atman ma'tso'tzu gi banku. Lo gaigi sinentenia. Za figu isinentenia gi mas papapa sa a'ajuda lokui i hospital. Pa' agu esti otruna kabazero si Dr. Berg. Menhalum na tauto. Atungu isinenti, atungu ikutura de nirensiata. Za sumagaha Guam sa este likni'a na guida pa' agu patgon Guam. Hasu na maput estina cho'tzu. Za dibamtia put mas. Sa kada mana'ali mege'ipoma'tso'wi, lo ta'atsa apas. Lo importante no fanmatu kada gua ha'mitig ufatu. Sa gua'adzu na na board, council and commission, man ma'apunta, loti man mahfatu, pe's ta'atsa quorum. Debi no fanmatu. Za sigurun da'ngiun li'i esti she' dos man ma'tso'tzu. Sigurun na ma'akumpli hafama'apunta ni'a.
My name is Joseph Arturo Cameron. I'm the President of Chamor Affairs. I come to you with great satisfaction, actually, to the effect that both Mr. Flores and Dr. Berg have been appointed to serve on the Guam Medical Board Examiners. I have sat years ago in the eighties on the Guam Licenseure Board. It was an awesome responsibility because I didn't only have to to head up the credentialing committee for medical doctors, but also for dentistry, for acupuncture and the like. And it was a lot of work. But it is important that we place emphasis to folks who are appointed, that they do make their quorums, and that it's nice to be appointed, but please, I endorse the fact that we must meet monthly. Hafade, my senators, and to all the listening audience on television, I come here before you today to provide written and oral testimony on behalf of a wonderful human being who truly has determination, optimism, care, tries, observes and returns healthcare delivery into the very hands of all of us consumers, and these six words spelled "doctor." All these words expound on the whole clinical world's need to concentrate on patients' rights. A right to treatment, a right to selecting a mode of treatment, the right to decline medical treatment, and the most difficult task of placing one's life in the trust of a medical professional. Dr. Nathaniel Berg carries these very core values, not only when at work with his patients, he carries these core values in the very character that has shaped his medical practice today. God only knows that working on Guam within a very small community places this doctor under a microscope. The good news is that the microscope images, as translated into human emotions, finds Dr. Berg a home in the hearts of all he heals, he loves and cares for. We are living in a time of turbulence, in times of very serious concern, that all who practice medicine in our small community must meet not only our clinical needs for treatment, but the most obvious of all, the healing hands of God entrusted in all our doctors. The acceptance of Dr. Berg to serve in a board that licenses medical professionals is clearly not an easy decision. He not only exposes his personhood to doing the right things to securing and licensing medical professionals, but he also has the daunting task to sometimes say no to medical licensure and protection of all of us here in Guam. I myself was on the Guam Licenseure Commission in the late 1980s, licensing not only medical doctors, but also licensing dentists, acupuncturists, nurses, physical therapists, psychologists, veterinarians, chiropractors, to just name a few. I have served the people of Guam over 27 years in the health services field, actually, my dear senators, 40 years. I have served the people of Guam 40 years, and find Dr. Berg exceptionally exceeding any litmus test that proves excellence. Dr. Berg, I recall reviewing the credentials of many medical examiners in Guam, and yours clearly tops 1% on the list of excellence. You are the epitome and the envy of many who also desire your very dedication to the world of medicine in this ever-changing field, and it is mined with many complex issues affecting the medical profession while adhering to a centrical world of laws. Your passion will be tested to be sure that the board licenses only the best it can offer from those subscribing to practice medicine right here on our island of Guam. My dear people of Guam, I have utmost confidence in this gentle man who has made Guam his home. He is Guam's son. He is Guam's pride. He believes in the best care possible for what ails us, what pains us, what makes us heal. My dear senators, I appeal to your kind and quickened response to a speedy confirmation of this fine doctor healer to serve willingly and freely our people of Guam. Si Dzus Masi, si menhalum presidenti, President of Chamor Affairs, Joseph Arturo Cameron. Thank you very much. Senator Mabini, thank you. Senator Israel.
Senators, Senator Nerissa and Senator Mary, I prepared a written testimony of which I've given you a copy, but I can say that in spite of the voluminous letters that you'll be getting, I perhaps am the best example of why Dr. Berg is a good man. I'll not talk about Phil Flores. Everyone knows Phil. In fact, I don't know why he hasn't run for senator or for governor of Guam, but one of these days, maybe. But I'm here to talk, besides Phil Flores, in behalf of Dr. Berg. I was diagnosed with a very fast-spreading infection that attacked the bone and created a gangrene in my bones in nine days' time, unusually, unusually fast. And I placed my hands, my life, in Dr. Berg's hands. He was the mastermind that oversaw my care, contacted all the various disciplines, the various doctors involved, and he saw to it that my best example is after surgery on Friday, I can walk. And I haven't gotten used to that yet, but I'm not supposed to be walking, but I am. So that to me is the best example of why these two gentlemen should be nominated and approved for the board. For my written testimony, confirmation of Dr. Nathaniel Berg and Phil Flores. My name is Alfred C. Israel, and I'm a productive resident of Guam for the last 64 years. I support the confirmation of Dr. Nathaniel Berg and Phil Flores. I've known Dr. Berg for nearly 14 years, both professionally and socially. When he first came to work at the basement of the Guam Medical Plaza building, and also when he was a neighbor of mine, both of them happened to be neighbors of mine, maybe that's why I'm walking. I've personally seen the development of the imaging industry, from its simple beginnings of just an X-ray machine to the present state-of-the-art sophisticated machines. And Dr. Nathaniel Berg was at the forefront of this development. He has led the way for the establishment of the most up-to-date state-of-the-art in the imaging industry in Guam. Others have followed his lead. Dr. Berg is a workaholic, so this added community work will not impede his present work schedule. Kindly confirm him, he'll be an asset to the community, he'll be an asset to Gov. Guam, and I hope he'll, and I know he'll give as much dedication to his new duties as he has to his profession. He is the first established, and I know for a fact, because I helped him with his air-conditioning problems to set up his machinery, so I've been personally involved in how he's expanded the industry, the imaging industry. He was always at the forefront, he was always the leader, he was always trying out new machinery. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, senators.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Senator?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and fine senators, honorable senators. My name is Sam Mabini, and I'm actually speaking today as a citizen, as Sam Mabini. And I don't have a written testimony, but it'll be an oral testimony. I was, I was very excited to hear that Dr. Nathaniel Berg, and now I've just found out, Mr. Phil Flores will be, had been nominated to serve as a board member for their medical examiners, Board of Medical Examiners, and I was very fast to to decide to come here and testify. You know, I've met Mr. Nathaniel Berg. Let me tell you a real quick story. As a woman, we are, we are expected to go regularly, yearly, to take our annual exams, one of which is a mammogram. And, you know, many of us take it, take it for granted. You go in, you go out, and we know of many stories where many walk out with results that are not very, which can be very disturbing, but I never thought that would happen to me anyways. Well, I remember going to Guam Radiology many years ago, I can't even remember how many years ago that was, and it was a regular examination. I had a woman who actually, it was a great nurse who was doing the examination, and then she, she left the room, and then I was sitting there by myself, and I was getting nervous, you know, she comes back and she does it again. And then this time she brought this, this tall doctor, who, that was the first time I had met him, and she introduced me to him, and he was Dr. Nathaniel Berg. Had no idea who he was, he was very diligent, because he wanted to make sure that that mammogram that was being done on me was done correctly or efficiently or for an accurate reading. And as a result of his diligence, I ended up being, having to go through surgery. And it was because of this kind of dedication and this real focus and concern about the customer, myself, that I feel that, and by the way, you know, I'm sure we've, we meet many doctors throughout our lives, but I will have to confess that Dr. Nathaniel Berg has been, has one of the best bedside manners, not to mention a real sense of real empathy and concern for his clients. I know that he had brought in the first digital mammography, I believe, machine, one of the most expensive technology on island, mainly because of the ability to make it easier for us women, quicker, less, less painful, and maybe clearer, more, more accurate results. And those machines I know are very, very, very expensive, and, but I know that he felt that that investment was very important for the people of Guam, for, especially for women. And it's that kind of dedication that I think that we need, and that we continue to need in our community, and especially now to serve on our board. Another experience I had was my mom, when I got a call from my family members saying, you know, there's something unusual, now she's speaking, maybe it's like her tongue is kind of thick, and immediately, without causing her alarm, I said, well, let's go to the doctor. It was late in the afternoon, and he immediately took us in and had an exam done, done on her, and sure enough, she had a minor stroke. And by, because of that quick response, we were able to take on preventative measures to prevent, you know, more, you know, future damage. It's, it's very clear to me how highly dedicated he is to our, to our people, and I know, yes, we do have many doctors as such here in Guam, but I can, I can attest on a firsthand basis multiple occasions how he has shown his dedication to, to customers like myself. And I, and I am sure that, that when he gets appointed to be a board member, that he will always keep the people at the forefront of his decisions. Now, I can't say that I had an examination by Mr. Phil Flores, but I will, but I will say that, but I will share that in my counter, and switching over to Mr. Phil Flores in a bit, but going back to Dr. Nathaniel Berg, I plead, I highly endorse his nomination, and I please, I ask the senators to please, to please support his nomination. And as, as far as Mr. Phil Flores, what can I say? He's been a great community supporter, and I know, again, he too would also keep the people at the forefront of his decisions when he's nominated to the board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
May I add one more sentence? When this first happened to me, the first reaction of my family was to send me to Manila or to Los Angeles, but I opted to stay here. And in my treatment, I'm a diabetic, and I've got a bad heart, complications arose, and I was assigned to the, or sent to the Guam Memorial Hospital for three days to recover and recuperate. And I have to say, the care I received at the Guam Memorial Hospital was phenomenal, outstanding. I can't say enough good things about them. I don't care what anybody says about government service, that service works. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Israel, and we have the management team of the Guam Memorial Hospital behind, behind you there, and so they're, you know, just like you, I share that we have some really good people there. So thank you, and thank you for taking care of Mr. Israel. Great. Senators, any questions or comments for this panel? Please.
Joseph, for you to speak Chamor, nan gos todung no'ri respetu palestina ta'auta. So ma'ulik no', usen agadesina un finatzum morugwini. And Mr. Israel, I'm so happy that you're well, very happy that you're well, sir. Yes, and thank you for sharing your insight, because sometimes that speaks to the, the human side as opposed to just pure competency, and that factor is a great compliment, isn't it, to individuals when they're in service? And Sam, nice to see you, Dr. Mabini. Thank you for providing also a personal perspective, which is very helpful in our, in our thoughts about the confirmation.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon. I will now call on Mr. Flores and Dr. Berg.
There's one more.
Oh, is there one more?
Yeah.
We'll have Mr. Rua Adonai first, and then we'll have the two of them.
Good afternoon, senators, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the gentlemen that are seated here in the table with me. I'd like to start off by saying something about Dr. Nathaniel Berg, and certainly would say something about Mr. Phil Flores. Dear Sir Madam, Hafade am Guam greetings. As Guam civic leader, I offer my full endorsement of Dr. Nathaniel Berg's confirmation as a board member. I debated heavily whether I should say something about it, but having had the opportunity to work with him for the past decade, and having had the opportunity to be a professor at the university for the past 15 years, and having led many innovative programs in social services on island, it was truly heartwarming to be working with a person who has clearly the same vision as I did. One thing that I wanted to make sure, and then I guess my past civic involvement has clearly shown that, that I, for one, would like services to be offered to our people of Guam over here. Dr. Berg, when I first started in there, I was just amazed on his tenacity and his ability to foresee something, to be able to, to seek new and innovative equipment, ways of doing things. I recall that, you know, my, my grandfather was here since 1956, and I came here when I was very young, and I remember having to bring my father to Guam Memorial Hospital, and then the old Guam Memorial Hospital, having to have, like, you know, an X-ray being done and the result not being made available. When we ended up following up with our physician, still practicing now, Dr. Guzman, it was two weeks already since we actually visited Guam Memorial Hospital, but he has not gotten any report about the X-ray that my father had, and that was really, like, troubling for me, and my father said to me, it's the way how it is, you just have to be patient about it. When I first started working for Guam Radiology, and I said, like, this is not acceptable. A very expensive program was brought into this island called the Ramsup System, which allows physicians, not only on island but off island, to be able to review all the studies conducted on that particular individual. I've recalled one patient who was diagnosed, came to us with a diagnosis of cancer in the fourth stage already, and during that time, you have to cling to whatever is available out there. Remember the time when you have to make CDs for all your studies and have to FedEx it at all those particular doctors? This person was actually seeking to be seen by four doctors all around the world, from South Africa, from Korea, Taiwan, and Manila. Within less than an hour, all the doctors, all these doctors from all around the world was able to see all the studies done in this particular patient, which enabled that person to leave within a few days after being diagnosed with that particular illness. This is something that is a reality over here in Guam, and this is, by the way, being offered with no cost to the patient over here. People from our brothers and sisters in Saipan used to have a mammogram and would have their mammogram be read two, three months later. Mammograms are now being done and read within 24 hours. It makes a big, big difference. The Ramsup System that Dr. Berg had brought to the island had made it very much possible. One of the other things that I admire about the way how we do things at our clinic is that not a single person that comes into our doorstep ever refused with any type of services, especially when it regards to their ability to pay. A lot of people don't realize that several people every day comes through our doorstep, having to have CT scan, X-ray or anything done, and they don't have money to pay. And by the way, irregardless of whether they are local people, they are tourists, they are what we call TNT, and, and the Tagalog term, where they're undocumented alien over here, we don't look at any of those things, and those services are provided for free to those folks. If I can just probably enumerate and have something like, that we can get ourselves, like, a tax credit for that one, probably we don't have to be paying taxes on a monthly basis. We've also had, what do you call it, when Dr. Berg, who is a radiologist, he could have actually concentrated in the field of radiology, but when many individuals coming to our clinic and says that I am in need of a urologist, without even thinking about it, ended up trying to get somebody from off island, a urologist, to actually practice here on Guam. Five years ago, between five, six years ago, we actually opened our doors, and the first specific urology consultant opened in Guam. This is actually first started by Dr. Berg. Then all of a sudden, cardiology patients needed to see some doctors. Cardiology facility was open, and now, within the next couple weeks, we are actually opening up the next pulmonology facility over here in Guam, which is actually not available over here. These are things that, that people don't realize that, that Dr. Berg is actually focusing his attention on. He had actually assisted the Guam Memorial Hospital, trying to find a good radiologist to, to bring to, and to practice at Guam Memorial Hospital, and this is without any type of benefits in our sight, and without any cost to Guam Memorial Hospital. I recall that I had to actually be standing with the immigration lawyer at the FedEx office on a Saturday afternoon, and they're closing at 12 noon time, and we were there at 11:59 to make sure that that person actually gets licensed over here in Guam. So his commitment, his tenacity, his eagerness to help the people Guam is certainly something that we ought to always, like, like, look and consider, especially for his appointment for GB and ME. As was said, stated by my good friend, former Senator Sam Mabini, Mr. Phil Flores over here doesn't need any introduction or anything, he has actually been a person that we always run to. We encounter some unusual problems in the community, he's always allocated many of his resources, especially when I was president of the Filipino community in Guam, and continues to do so to make sure that we advance whatever it is that we are doing. In fact, it's because of his generosity that I've had my weekly Saturday morning talk show for 10 years now, called the Daming Pinoy, at his building over there in Dedodo, and because of his generosity, that free services actually continues to discuss about the needs of our particular community. Thank you, senators.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adonai, for that testimony.
First, thanks to everybody who's been saying so many nice things about Dr. Berg and myself. Chairman Dennis Rodriguez, other distinguished members of the committee, I am Philip J. Flores, and I come here today to humbly ask for your support for my nomination to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and to answer any questions you may have for me. I wish to serve as the only public, or that is, non-physician member of the board. It has been my honor to previously civically participate on two other public boards. From 1987 to 1995, I was chairman of the board, the board for the Port Authority of Guam, and from 2003 to 2007, I was chairman of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board, Authority Board, and I got the pleasure to serve with a lot of the people in the room today. Both experienced, though we're often, though they are often long hours and contentious debates, especially with the hospital, were personally rewarding, and with your collective blessing, I would welcome contributing to our island through such service again. Thank you, and again, should you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them. But before I leave, Dr. Berg is one of my best friends, now my children call him Uncle Nate. Now, my children call him Uncle Nate. He's smart, you know, you've heard all the nice things about him. We're partners in a business, and we work well together, and he'd do a great job. And if he doesn't serve, I won't serve. So you have to serve. Okay, he'll do it. Any, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Dr. Berg, I think we'll go ahead and take your opening too, and then we'll open up the, any questions the senators may have.
Sure. Chairman, Senator Wood, Senator Torres, again, it's an honor to be here, and I'm humbled by the kind words that people have said already. And I, too, am seeking your support for my nomination to be a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. I've been here over 20 years now, and Guam indeed is my home, and I think I was one of the fastest converts to becoming a member of Guam's community that really can take place in professional life. I had the incredibly good fortune of having parents who are both public health physicians who worked for the United Nations, and was able to travel a lot as a child. And when I got to Guam, I basically got on the plane and said, "Yeah, I think this is where I want to live." And even I recall a story I've recounted before, where four days after I got here, I met with Dr. Titanow, Dr. Duñez, Chris Perez, Larry Lozama, and my crews, and was looking for a job at the doctor's clinic, and they said, "So what are your plans here?" And I said, "Well, Guam is my home, and I'm going to stay and live here, and so I'm looking to, you know, try to improve the quality of radiology services." And then they asked me why I wanted to be here, and I told them that I had already found the members of the community to be incredibly caring and appreciative. That everybody I was meeting was saying, "Thank you for being here, and we hope you'll stay." And that was a time when I felt, you know, if I, if people want me to stay here, and I can make a difference, and I like it here, and people are so nice, maybe we can enlist the entire community to improve the quality of care that's available, available on Guam. And then it was John Titan who asked, "Well, how long have you been on Guam?" I said, "Four days." And they, of course, laughed, and they tell me now, they all said, "Let's give it a week or two, let's see what he says in about a month." And I ran into Chris Perez a month later, and he said, "So how do you feel now?" I said, "What?" And still, they asked me, "Still, 20 years later?" "Yeah, I think we're going to stay." So the state of healthcare at that time was way behind the times even for then. Guam was in a dire need for improvement in healthcare, and we had people like the gentleman that I mentioned, and Debbie Erickson, and rest her soul, but there were so many people who were poised to come together at that time and say, "We've got to build on what we have now and make the standard of care on Guam be the standard of care as it sits in the rest of the United States or better." And I wanted to be part of that. And that, at that time, things were, we so often faced "no" as an answer. You want to bring in a very high-level MRI, you know, sort of the, that's really not possible. The power generation is not good enough. So I would go and address that and see Simon Sanchez and say, "Can you help me to make power smoother in Timooning so that Siemens will actually sell me an MRI? If they're going to warranty it, they said, "The power has to be smoother." "Okay, we can do it." "How about financing?" "Oh, the insurance companies don't have contracts." "Okay." So I met with people like Frank Campio and said, "Can you help to get these contracts, even though we don't have one? Can you get one in place?" And Don Davis said, "Stay well," and the like, all said, "Yes, we'll do that." To meet with everybody, with banking, with all sorts of people who initially said, "It's not possible, and if you stick with it," and we had support in the community, we got an MRI. And now we have four high-level MRIs on Guam. Things changed dramatically, equipment-wise, and they continue to change. More recently, we're facing the issue, we're facing the issue of what do we do for people who need cardiac angioplasty? Unfortunately, the answer, when I approached Navy and said, "What do you do when patients arrive and are having a heart attack?" He said, "We watch them have a heart attack." I said, "What can we do? There's nothing to do." So a group of people have gotten together and tried to say, "That needs to change." And not only are we soon going to have it such that when you report to an emergency room, your heart attack is treated, but there's also a cardiac surgeon that can then do a bypass if it's needed. This is something that was hardly imaginable unless you said, "We're not going to take no for an answer, and we're going to have better quality care on Guam than in a similar-sized community in the U.S. because we're isolated." It's therefore incumbent upon us not to try and do the best we can, but to do better than other communities. And I've been, I mean, I've been honored to work with incredibly talented physicians who saw that same possibility, that we could do better than other places. And it's made a difference in how much, how we can attract people to come here because they feel that this is safe and I can bring my family here. What hasn't changed is my feeling for the community. And I think there's a unique practice on Guam that, as physicians who call Guam home, who aren't out here for a week or two, but call Guam home, that I used to say to patients sometimes when they were a bit antsy about whether or not to follow my suggestions, I'd say, "You know, I'm treating you like you're my family. This is what I would advise a member of my family." And now it comes to, really, every patient that comes to see me is a member of my family. They're part of this community. And I don't think there's a single patient that comes into our clinic or into the affiliated clinics that we have who you can't very quickly make that association. There's no seven degrees of separation in my life on Guam. It's typically one. I can dance around a little bit, I will find one, where they are very close to somebody who's very close to me. It's my teacher's sister. It's my kid's best friend's aunt. It's also close that everybody I treat, I'm treating like they're a member of my family because they are. This is the Guam family that we have. And even when it comes to the military now, I think the military that serve out here deserve high-quality care and not to have to leave. They're serving our country, they come to Guam, this is part of the United States of America, they should have the same quality care that they have anywhere else in the U.S. The veterans are very poorly served, but I see that as changing too, to where we can expect that we will have better quality care for everybody. When I was asked to serve on the board, I wondered about the perception of sometimes the raucous emotions that can happen in medicine, and I wondered, I thought it's important for people to understand that these are healthy debates that we have, that once debates are out there, because both parties in medicine that I've seen here are striving to get something better for Guam. They may have a little bit of a different way to approach it, but that comes to healthy debates, and people feel strongly about it, about different issues. But once those debates are settled, we all come together and work together. I've seen people arguing on the radio, or hear them argue on the radio, or see them arguing on television or in newspaper articles, and the same day, see them working together in an operating room on the same patient, or one calls the other one to come and help in the emergency room. And I hope that the community understands that there is no divisive medical society, medical community here. Yes, we feel strongly, and we're out and advocating for what we feel is the right thing, but once those, as I said, once those debates are settled, we come together as a medical community and have been able to be part of an improvement in quality of care for everyone in our Guam family over the past 20 years. So when I was asked to serve on the board, I, of course, said yes, and said, "If you nominate Phil, also I'll do it." So the truth of that is, I'm very happy to have Phil there. So I did say yes, because it's just another part of me doing my time to serve on a committee. Yes, it'll take time, but unfortunately, Mr. Israel is right. I am an alcoholic, oh, excuse me. Not yet, not that I know of. So to talk, I am an absolute workaholic, right? And I'm not seeking to join, is there a WA? I don't know if there is, but I'm not joining WA. So I will live as a workaholic, it's in my blood, and I'm going to stay that way. So no, it won't take away from the care that I provide patients. And I might also add that, and I'm proud to do it, that indeed I support Mr. Flores. Phil is a good friend of mine, and indeed, his kids call me uncle and vice versa. And that, again, stems from the closeness that people have. If you become neighbors, you become friends very quickly, and that's how Phil and I met as neighbors. But Phil has been, when he was on the board, there's such extraordinary frustration that I really thought any day now, after about the first day, he's going to quit, because it's incredibly frustrating. Not that it's the staff of GMH or the physicians, it's just an incredibly difficult job to run a place out there that serves as the only place where people can turn to for health care. How do you do that? Incredible patience, diligence, and devotion to the people of Guam, which he has clearly shown. And I welcome being a member of a board where Phil Flores serves. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. Berg. And first of all, congratulations on both of your nominations, and I want to thank you for your service to our community, both of you, in your professional careers, your civic involvement, and your community involvement is just, needs to be recognized. So I thank you very much for wanting to, or agreeing to stepping up and serving in another board in another capacity, right? Mrs. Berg, I want to also thank her for being here and for her support of Dr. Berg. You know, so I have a few questions, and then I'll ask the two senators here if they have any questions. You know, in the medical, in this, in the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, it's a seven-member board, we believe we have five there now, and so both of you would complete the seven-member board, one as a public member and one as a physician. You know, in terms of any, and you kind of mentioned it, about the perception of any maybe conflict, how, you know, how would you, this is for you, Dr. Berg, how would you perhaps set your, or how would you react to things if someone would come in as an application? And, you know, our human nature, right? I mean, we're all humans, and we have a human nature, but how would you separate that from your duties as a board member?
Well, I think we do that on a near-daily basis anyway on Guam, because we're, there are what might in other communities be conflicts that would be exclusionary, where you'd say, "Oh, this person is too close to this person." Indeed, in California, for example, when there are applicants before the Guam Board, before the California Board of Medical Examiners, if that person resides in your county, you are not allowed to be, you're not allowed to be involved in the discussion. Those counties might have 20 times as many people as Guam. We don't have the luxury of having people who understand the needs of the Guam community and also don't live here and don't have conflicts. So I think if you're going to choose to live in a community like Guam and choose to serve publicly, it's incumbent upon you to know where to draw the line and where to separate out your personal interests versus conflicts that you can overcome. So if it's my brother who's applying for a license, no, I cannot participate in that. But if it's another radiologist, as long as others don't perceive a conflict, and I think if I were to perceive a conflict in another board member, I would bring it up. And I don't think that person would necessarily be insulted, who might say, "Yeah, you know, I hadn't really thought about the fact that that person's going to rent from my office space. I suppose that is a conflict, and I'll recuse myself." I don't think we've had that type of difficulty on Guam, say, at Guam Memorial Hospital, where you're looking at credential and the like. People have come to settle in at a level that we are all rather comfortable with in terms of knowing when to separate out your conflict. You yourself, I imagine, have this conflict, debate every once in a while. We have to think about, "It's my neighbor," or, "I used to work with that person, I don't anymore," where those relationships are. Thank goodness, there are seven members on the board, so that those decisions can be made without having to, having a recusal mean that you don't have a quorum. And indeed, what Mr. Arturo Cameron expressed about the need for people to show up is something that I take to heart and will. I wouldn't serve if I didn't feel that I could make, I'll say, at least 10 out of 12 of a year. I might be off island for a couple of them, but I'll do everything I can to make this a very high priority because of the importance of making sure that licenses are appropriately reviewed. So the quorum is there, then that allows me a little easier to recuse myself. I guess that's how I'll approach it.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I think it's important that we ask that in, I don't envy, I don't envy you or the other members who are on that board, you know, but, and this is for both of you, I know in the past, we used to have a certificate of need process, right? And that was abolished. There's some efforts to revive that, you know, to really take a look at the whole landscape of healthcare on island. It really has expanded and grown, I think, and I think everyone would agree. What is your thoughts on that certificate of need? And would that be, you know, perhaps hand-in-hand with the work of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners now if we, because if we had that process, then we'd know what are the services we need, the specialists that we need. Would that work hand-in-hand?
Yes and no. I can, you ask, I'll tell you, I have a personal experience with it, having had a certificate of need when I purchased Guam Radiology Consultants, and I'm a free-market person when it comes to healthcare. I think the free market works best in healthcare, so long, under certain provisions, that you have, of course, licensure boards and insurance boards and other regulatory boards that help to regulate healthcare, but I'm an incredible free-market person. I think the freer you allow people to come in and expand, the better off we all are. So in keeping with my belief and my feelings about that, I gave it up voluntarily, because I thought, "Why should I be the only person that can bring in a CAT scan? That doesn't make any sense." So I voluntarily gave it up. I don't believe that we need a certificate of need here. I think those type of guaranteed monopolies served their purpose on Guam before, so I think it was important to have them. I don't believe we need them anymore at all. Maybe in other industries, but not healthcare. We have a vibrant healthcare community, and I think those needs will be served by being able to attract people now that we have newer facilities, newer equipment, more specialists. That's self-perpetuating. It means other specialists will come in. If you bring in an advanced cardiologist, then someone says, "Oh, okay, now I have some backup, I have some other colleagues to work with, and I can bring in better equipment because there are other people to use it." So no, I don't support the certificate of need process as being necessary in Guam. Maybe in the future, if things change, but not me.
I wasn't even aware there was such a thing till just now, but I'm with Dr. Berg. I'm a free-market person, obviously, I'm a capitalist, and I think that's how to stay in the community. We've come so far in medicine over the last 20 years, and maybe it was when the archbishop was putting together the hospital in the early '70s, that was our first stride, and then, of course, that became GMH, and the number of doctors who are here now, the amount of care we have now, not just like Dr. Berg's clinic, Dr. Lozama's clinic, and our AMC that just opened up, and of course, the Regional Medical Center city that just opened up, I don't, there's, you know, we've just grown leaps and bounds, and I won't see a need to go backwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Wow. So, well, you know, it's almost hard to address you, Dr. Berg, and also for you, Phil, Mr. Flores, primo, because both of you are really accomplished, and I'm almost intimidated in asking you any questions relative to the positions that you are going to take, because this is really a tremendous responsibility. This is the board that will be a gatekeeper. You will be the one who will determine whether those who want to practice and take care of us are really worth giving the license to practice here, and that's a big, big responsibility. The smaller the number of a board, the greater responsibility. So I just thank you that you're willing to step up. You know, with the high standards that both of you have demonstrated through your respective professions, I do know that will translate to high standards of expectations that you would also practice as board members, especially with this. But I do, I do want to ask, first, Phil, you know, in your role as a community, as a representative for the public, what do you think would be the critical issues that you would like to address as a member and as our representative there in that board?
I think you've just mentioned several of them, to make sure whoever comes in, because it's going to be eventually taking care of all of us in this room, is capable, just as Dr. Lozama, Dr. Berg are. And that also that if we can make it easier for a capable person, physician, to come into the community, try not to have a roadblock there, because, again, we've come so far, we want to, it would seem to me, especially for my time in the hospital when I was on the board, that we could have used more surgeons, hospital surgeons, and so the easier we can make it for qualified individuals to want to come to Guam, that's what I would try to do.
Okay. Okay, and Dr. Berg, you know, I'm all for equal opportunity and equal treatment. And so in the past, my understanding was that there could have been a conflict that may have a may have arose in that credentialing. I don't know if that was just rumors or what, but I would like to ask you the same question about the critical issues and the extent to which you might be able to ensure that everyone will be given the fair treatment and the equal opportunity to practice here.
Well, I share Phil's role in making the availability of licensure and the ability for us to attract specialists here, and I use this term with a definition after it, easier, meaning that things, that the obstacles that we have right now for licensure, there are clearly going to be things that can be addressed to make it a little easier. We don't have an electronic form, for example. So that makes it a little easier for those who are busy in practices to be a little more, Guam's a little more attractive, you look online, and you don't have to have forms sent to you and mailed and all the other things now, and all that can be done electronically. So I think that opens doors a little bit. It's not, it's subtle, it's not changing any laws, it's merely making it so that applications can be processed by people faster who are, hopefully, we're getting busy physicians that are coming out, not ones who are sitting around, have plenty of time to hand fill in applications. So the concept, again, is to allow as many qualified physicians to come here, put in as few roadblocks that might otherwise restrict access. So I think my conflict would be merely in saying that if we're going to deny someone a license, that efforts are made to explain to somebody what they might do to be able to get the license here. That's really would be, my idea is merely to look at how to keep the standards at a high level, but not have administrative issues get in the way, not have things like mail get in the way when things, when there are ways to solve problems or address questions rather than saying no by saying, we have a few questions. So that's my bias, is to, before one says no, to give people a fair chance. And indeed, you had mentioned equal opportunity, is to look at those who may not fit the exact definition of what the board rules state, to see if that is in some way prohibiting us from getting otherwise qualified individuals. There are 50 states, each of them have very different licensure requirements, and we, I think it's incumbent upon us to look and see, how do the others do it? Are there things that we can learn that maybe make it easier? Are there loopholes that we may have missed that allow someone not qualified to come in? So we don't want to be, again, all due respect to the state of California, when I applied for a license to work in Pennsylvania when I first got out of medical school, it's a two-page application, the checklist for California was two pages. The checklist of all the things that you had to submit, that was really cumbersome, and I don't think added to qualifications. So I think if we move somewhere towards making it, again, less restrictive administratively, but allowing still the same qualifications that we're looking for to ensure that we're looking out for the safety and well-being, but that involves also being open to looking at change, not necessarily just enforcement, that again, requires a little more effort. And I think Phil shares that with me, that we're not just there to show up and vote, but to also look and say, wait a minute, why isn't this person getting a license? Let's look if there's something that, how does California handle that? Let's look at 10 different states randomly that this person, I'll give you an example. I've seen applicants who have licenses in four, five, six states, and they're denied licenses in Guam. Now, I'm not always privy as to why those people are not licensed, because there are privacy issues involved, but I think we need to look at some of those things and wonder, are we doing something wrong? The answer, maybe no, maybe that we uncovered something because we were more diligent than someplace else, but if someone's licensed in five or six states and they're unrestricted licenses and have a relatively clean record, maybe we are doing something wrong. So that would, again, like you said, to open up fair access to everybody, not be restrictive in our allowing physicians to come in, whether they be radiologists or surgeons or any other specialty.
Okay. So finally, I just want to thank you as well. You know, we have benefited from your, from your commitment to our island and from your high level of care, and I really appreciate it very much. And also, Mr. Flores, thank you very much. Thank you again for stepping up to this tremendous responsibility.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you, Senator. Senator Torres?
Dr. Berg and Mr. Flores, I know both of you personally, and I have the highest respect for both of you. But I have a question that's a little out of the box, and I just want to get your opinion about it. I recently came back from the Philippines, and as always when I'm traveling to the Philippines, there are a lot of people that are seeking medical care there. Our medical insurance providers allow patients from Guam to seek medical treatment in the Philippines, and it's covered. But yet, those same physicians and experts who are treating us there often aren't able to get licenses on Guam. And in other venues held here at the legislature, there is always that discussion, how do you get more specialists to the island? You know, there's an ample supply of professionals in this foreign jurisdiction that would be quite capable. And in fact, when we go into their jurisdiction, we put our hands in their, our lives in their hands. What are your thoughts on that, on filling the gaps in Guam with physicians who are not currently licensed on Guam, but from the foreign jurisdictions who are practicing in the Philippines? Let's use that as an example.
I believe the enabling law for the Guam Medical Examiners, for our board, does take into recognition people who have gone to medical school in a foreign country, who are licensed in a foreign country, certainly not an expert in this like Dr. Berg would be. But outside of the visa issues, there are certain bodies that do, I'm going to say, certify the quality of your medical education. And of course, if a person's been working as a physician in another country for quite a while, they're going to be certified by that country or that, wherever, that state, whatever. So I think we just have to perhaps realize that there are, all the good physicians are not in America, there are some outside of America, too.
I would say there are a couple of things. I would agree in general with what Phil said, but I think there are certain issues that have to do with immigration and the federal regulatory bodies that don't allow us to simply move people. In other words, you can't just say, hey, this person I know is an extraordinarily good cardiac surgeon, let him or let her move to Guam, and one of them being CMS, Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services, which require more training in order for them to be able to, to be able to work at hospitals, for example. Guam Memorial Hospital, having, being a Medicare certified hospital, would risk its certification if it doesn't comply with those laws. I will not claim to be an expert on those rules and regulations, but I know that it was explored when I was on the bylaws there as to how we might have visiting surgeons, even in urgent and emergent situations, could we fly someone over? And Medicare came back and said, no, you cannot. You will risk your certification if you do not have appropriately licensed individuals. And it's not Guam that would make those rules regarding licensure. So some of those rules are set federally. Additionally, it is a bit difficult to understand the, to make the comparisons, even if there are extraordinarily good physicians, because medical schools and residencies are judged by the American College of Graduate Medical Education and the bodies that accredit schools in the, in the U.S. Now, there are some schools, like the American Medical School in Beirut, Lebanon, of all places, that have gone to the process of getting their schools accredited by the U.S. medical schools. There are schools in the Caribbean, which you may have heard about, and there are schools in Mexico, who have sought to be accredited to provide similar levels of education as are granted in the U.S. And to my knowledge, there aren't any in the Philippines. Again, I don't claim to have any level of expertise, but I also know that we've had incredibly good physicians come out of the Philippines who had all of their education, except for a few advanced years. For example, Dr. Patero went to medical school, did his residency there, and came to the U.S. for advanced level of training and is, as one surgeon here said, the best urologist he's ever worked with. So do I see us, again, opening up those opportunities as much as possible? I think it's incumbent on us to do so, right? As much as legally possible. There are, when I looked at the laws, again, that govern our activity on the board, to make sure that this is something I want to do, there are alternative accrediting processes. For example, if someone becomes U.S. board certified, that should be sufficient as accrediting because that says they know as much as anybody who trained in the U.S. up to and finishing that. So there are potential opportunities there. Immigration components, they have to have taken, I do know one, I remember, that they have to have taken a third level of licensure examination or they won't be allowed to come in. So that changes things a little bit. Again, those regulatory mechanisms should not be looked at as other than steps in the process, not to put them as roadblocks. And maybe we can encourage individuals to take those tests and then allow them to come in. The other one that is not quite the same, but is a thought, is that we, that had crossed my mind, and someone, when a physician who found out that I was being nominated, asked me a question that, it just apropos of your question, said, well, we allow licenses for people who graduate medical school in Canada. We allow board certification in Canada to be the equivalent of U.S. board certification because they are. The medical schools are judged to be equal. But in Canada, they allow the Royal College of Physicians and Surgeons to be the equivalent, which means if you got your license and training in England or in Hong Kong, and you are a fellow, as they call it in the Royal College of Radiologists or Surgeons or Obstetricians, that they say that is sufficient evidence that you have the qualifications to practice medicine in Canada. So if they meet the qualifications or immigration, they can come and practice. That's something that I think warrants exploring and perhaps codifying after careful due diligence to make sure that, I don't know if it's the same in England and Hong Kong, for example, I just use those as two examples. But again, in keeping with both my free market value and the sense of duty to the people of Guam to allow as many qualified physicians as possible to practice here, I'm 100% with you in that idea that we should further explore options.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Thank you very much. Again, we'll keep the record open for anyone that wishes to provide written testimony for the next few days, and we'll work on getting this out as soon as we could for the next session. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Josh.
We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, and I invite Mr. Lewis and members of your management team. Okay, well, we'll now start on this informational hearing on the Guam Memorial Hospital. I want to thank Ms. Lewis, Dr. Lizama, Garzinha, and June for being here. Ms. Lewis, this is really your first, your first appearance before the committee. I know you were here before the Appropriations Committee during the budget, but this is your first on the committee. We did send you a few questions and information that we requested, and I want to acknowledge that we did receive several of the items that we requested about noon this afternoon. So the committee would be, will be reviewing that, and will be sending you any additional questions that we may have. But I'll go ahead and welcome you to open up.
So much for allowing us the opportunity to come and dialogue about our wonderful hospital here. I would like to just make a comment before we start in this topic. In the area of certificate of need, one of my first jobs in healthcare was in the planning department of a large medical center in Ohio, and I personally wrote five certificate of needs and have a bit of familiarity about the background of that tool that was used in the U.S. Actually, there was a time when Hill Burton Funds, if you were going to use them, required a state to have a certificate of need process. Then that changed, and now the states are able to pretty much manage their programs on what they think is best. In some states, very much regulate and control the expansion or change in health services through a seal and process, and other states pretty much allow total free market. And I don't think there's any one answer that's right or wrong, but I do think that it is a time that would be appropriate to think about it because the landscape in the hospital field here is changing. We, in the past, have had only one non-military hospital, Guam Memorial. Now, all of a sudden, we have two. So, you know, I think in a, with a small population like this, are we going to have duplicate services, you know, in very expensive specialized areas? It does raise the issue of whether certificate of need process would be appropriate or not.
Thank you for that. And I mentioned that because we do, there's an effort to reincorporate that with legislation as before the body. And so I appreciate that because it's not really meant to hinder the expansion of healthcare, but we see the landscape now really changing. And I think to be able to protect the community from duplicate services, and then, you know, what, something which, which we don't want to happen is that if we have too much of the same services, then it's, you know, one by one, they slowly disappear. And then, at the end of, at the end of the day, it's the people of Guam who would be left, again, without that service. So there's more discussions on that, and I think we have one September 30th, and we'll make sure we invite the hospital to be part of that discussion.
Thank you.
Okay?
So I'm happy to represent Guam Memorial and happy to be part of a great group of clinicians, physicians, nurses, and other support people, people in finance and other areas that it takes to run a hospital. During the last year, I think Guam Memorial has gone through a lot of change. Many different things are happening. But some of the areas that, that you want to talk to us about involve financial things, which is typical. I think you want to get an update on our physician and nurse staffing situations, and we want to be able to talk about that. Also, we now have another hospital that just very recently opened, both inpatient and emergency room service, and so we want to talk about that and tell you how we see that that has impacted us so far. So I'll tell you that there's been some change in the industry that has dramatically affected our hospital in the last couple of years, and it's dramatically affected many hospitals in the U.S. Because 10 or 12 years ago, there were not hospitalist programs in existence, okay? But today, they're very widespread. And when I say hospitalist program, the definition of that is where the hospital manages on an inpatient unit, the care for the patients on that unit. And the hospital itself has their own physicians that manage that care versus physicians from the community coming in to manage their own patients. This model was developed for a couple reasons. One, a basic part of it is that it increases the quality of care in general because you have people, the same people there, and that group of people are there 24 hours a day versus someone that's off-site and has to be called. Also, from the hospital's standpoint, if you've got the responsibility for the patient's care, and you do, no matter who the physician is, having your own people there and being able to help them with their standards and with their level of care, it does have a positive outcome. The negative to hospitalist programs in the industry is that it's increased the amount of staffing overall that's needed with physicians. So an example would be up in the hospital I was at in Maine. When I first went there, we didn't have a hospitalist program, and we had a number of internists that provided the care for the patients in our beds. Once we started the hospitalist program, we hired several internists, okay, which took these people out of private practice, so that when an opening occurred in a private practice office, then all of a sudden, there are office, then all of a sudden, there, there isn't the supply of doctors to pull from that you used to have. So now, the medical schools in the U.S., 85% of all the internists coming out of residency are being hired into in-hospital programs, hospitalist programs. So there's very few left to go into private practice. That's had the outcome of raising the salary level of what it takes to hire someone. So Guam Memorial has, under Dr. Lizama's leadership, the whole organization has started to build up these in-hospital programs. And, and, you know, we've got some very good docs, and, and we have substantial numbers of people that are doing it, but it does come at a cost. And overall, in the industry, whether we're hiring an internist for that kind of position or for any other kind of position, you now have to pay more for an internist than you did three, four, or five years ago. So it's hard to get physicians, it's hard to get physicians to come to Guam. There's a shortage in almost every area, but the hospital has done very respectably well in, in getting the job done in that. And I want Larry to talk a little bit about some of the challenges we have, even though we've hired a number of people. Then in the area of nursing, the hospital has done very well, and I, I appreciate Mr. Israel's comments. And, and every day, I see the outcome of our patients that are being there that have such really good care. This morning, I walked up on the ICU to see a patient, and I, I was almost overwhelmed with joy and emotion to find a group of clinicians there, including our new medical director of ICU, Dr. Sablon, who's from Guam, had a vision to become a doctor, went, went to medical school, residency, fellowship, now has come back. Larry's hired her, and she's only been on the job about a month. And here she is, having all the clinicians, all the nurses, the therapists, and they're conducting rounds on every patient in ICU. And I just sat there for five minutes, and I said, wow, if I had to be a patient in a hospital, I would never want to be anywhere else but right here. We have great care. Those things cost, but nursing, we've done very well. We're having more of a problem with getting specialty nurses, and Zena can talk about what our approach is to try to get experienced ICU nurses because there's not enough here. So at this time, I'd like Dr. Lizama to talk a little bit about the challenges we have in, in getting physicians, and then Zena to talk about some of the specialty nurse challenges.
Great. And Doc, if you could, or Ted, you know, the, I know in the, in the earlier stages of our new hospital opening up, there were some departures of physicians and nurses, and so has that, and it, it posed a challenge for you to be able to recruit, you know, new physicians, right? And so, I mean, you know, how is that situation, you know, panning out now? And also, the, you know, every day, we, we see that report that the newspaper does every day on the number of rooms, and the, the greatest expectation is when the new hospital opens, you'll see that kind of decrease. And I'm sure it's going to take more time, you know, they've only opened none of it in a month yet. And so if you can share with us too, what the, the status of that is as well.
Let me just say that I'm, I'm actually very excited in the last two or three weeks to see the kind of things that are going on because the new hospital is ramping up. They're now starting to see patients, their emergency room is open. And I've been watching our program very closely. On Friday, we have a policy that when, when our bed capacity is at or more than 100%, we do an announcement. We had multiple announcements on Friday. Our emergency room in the last couple of weeks has been absolutely jammed. Our new, our new facility there is, is so much better than the old one, but our numbers haven't gone down. Now, I attribute this to the fact that because the new hospital is starting to see patients, and that's great. But if you look at the total need for the community, based on the generally accepted need numbers that are there in the industry, we need 400 beds in Guam. That's 2.5 beds per thousand population. And what do we have? Well, we have 48 with Navy, but those beds aren't really available to everyone. Guam Memorial, of course, our inventory's been there, and then you have new beds of 130 at GRMC. When you add all those together, it's 339, still well short of 400. I think what is happening and what will happen, which is the basis of why a new hospital made sense for Guam, is that, you know, so much business goes away from Guam, in part because people may find it attractive, but also in part because we haven't had all the resources that we needed to take care of all those patients. So I think the goal of, of the community was that a new hospital would help take care of people that couldn't be taken care of before. And so far, in the first few weeks, you know, whatever business that they're experiencing there, it doesn't appear to be coming, causing any decline in our facility.
Good afternoon, Senator, and Senators. You have to excuse me because I'm a little bit jet-lagged. When I heard that Dr. Burke and Mr. Phil Flores were going to be confirmed today, I rushed to Guam so that I could be here for their confirmation. But then Mr. Lewis requested that I also show up for this one, so it's, what time is it in the West Coast? 15:25, 2 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning anyway, in East Coast? Anyway, you know, I've been in practice in Guam for the last 25 years and maybe 26 now. And when we look at how we used to support hospital services, if you looked at the community, as times have gone by, you know, we, we've basically found that that was not really working for the care of patients, especially for the patients that didn't really have identified physicians. We also had public health to service at that time. So then we looked at, at, you know, what is best for patient care, and as, as what's happening in the mainland, the hospitalist program has, has taken off. You know, the, the hospice program has demonstrated basically, you know, decreased length of stay, probably some control in unnecessarily, unnecessary utilization of limited resources. So, and, and again, for, for the patients, and this is really the reason that I thought hospice program would work, is for the patients that don't have doctors that, you know, that are coming to the hospital because they don't have access to public health care, I, I think they feel more, they feel, they appreciate more the care provided by hospitalists because you have dedicated staff that, that are there for them and are willing to listen to, to their, to their concerns and provide a comprehensive care. So it's been received well by, by patients that really have not had, you know, their own private care and/or have not had the follow-up care in their outpatient. Now, as we have adopted the hospitalist model, we started with internal medicine and pediatrics and obstetrics and gynecology. Now, the challenge for those three service has always, you know, been, you know, getting enough physicians to support a full-service hospitalist. Now, right now, we're limiting our hospital service to primarily the indigent care, the public health care, the, the patients that don't have assigned physicians. But in some models, it could be basically a closed hospital where, you know, the hospital, employed hospitalists are the ones that manage patients, and then, you know, have through electronic health records communicate outside the community to physicians, you know, what has happened in the hospital. So certainly, you know, there's, there's more to be done with expanding and improving our hospitalist program. But I would tell you that the challenge has been always about recruiting. And in, in internal medicine, for instance, you know, we basically have, you know, two or three full-time, full-time employed physicians while the rest, about five, are filled by locums. Now, in getting these locums or travel doctors, and we can call, as they call travel nurses, in getting this locums, you know, we, we pay a premium price because we have to pay the recruiters and we also have to pay the doctors. And after a year of service, you know, they then are free agents so they can basically practice on the island. So unfortunately, you know, we've had the hospice program for the last one year, and we, we were fortunate that we have some doctors that could be free agents. Timing-wise, the new hospital opens up, and so in that regard, we have lost some, some physicians that, that, you know, could be, you know, now be employed at the hospital and be, you know, committed to a more permanent position rather than, you know, continuing with locums. But unfortunately, you know, with the new hospital, we're in much, with much greater challenge in recruiting for physicians to support the hospice program in all services that we have. I'll just run the list down. You know, in emergency room, we've, we lost two, three doctors, actually, you know, one that we, two that were already in staff, and one was in the process of coming to Guam already, and then, you know, so we lost that. Anesthesia, you know, gone, gone back and forth in that, numbers maybe one or two. Internal medicine, like I said, two have gone over to the, to the new hospital. So certainly, and then pediatrics, we lost one. So, and, and it's very difficult, Senators, to really get these physicians on island. So really, at, at this point in time, we're no, we're no better today in providing physician service to meet the needs of this hospital program than we were, you know, a year or so ago. The most difficult challenge now is actually that the market has changed, the landscape has changed. Now, we have a hospital that may offer more benefits and more compensation than what we, that, what I'm allowed to do, given our, you know, budget constraints and resources. So, you know, it's not easy to, to find doctors for Guam, and we have actually, you know, recruiters that are constantly, you know, sending applicants our way, and Dr. Burke and Mr. Flores will be looking at those applicants. And it's, it's, it's not necessarily that we're very restrictive in giving licenses, it's just we, we do, you know, significant, you know, vetting of these applicants to make sure that, you know, they, they're here for, for the needs of the patient, of the community. But, so, yeah, it's, it's been, it's going to be more difficult because of the limited applicants interested in coming to Guam, the former hos, from the Guam Memorial Hospital, the non-competitive, you know, salary and benefits. We are under the government and government benefits. You know, the annual leave time off is really very restrictive for professionals. Very strict for professionals, so that unfortunately, you know, is going to give us an even greater challenge. Will we reduce the need to support, you know, the, the hospice program, given the new hospital? I really don't know, you know. We've had some discussions about how we should collaborate and, and, and be able to, you know, basically divide the, the internal medicine patients so that we don't have to have, you know, the same number of providers at GMH. It hasn't made an impact at this point. We're still going to be serving the public health patients, we're still going to be serving the indigent patients, we're still going to be serving, I mean, at least for a year, Medicare, Medicaid is still going to come to GMH because, you know, they still need time to, to get certification for Medicaid and, and Medicare. So, and, and that's, that's a big patient population that, that we have at GMH. So as far as I, you know, I know as of today, and with June, Paris, you know, sharing the census every day, I've not seen a decrease in the patient utilization of Guam Memorial Hospital.
Okay, thank you very much, Doc, and I think everyone could agree that, you know, since, you know, you've been actively involved in the patient delivery side, you know, things have, have really been improving. You know, you've, you've been involved a couple of years now. I think just the testimony also of Mr. Israel earlier speaks volumes of, of at least that side of the House, that, that, you know, the, the programs that you're implementing there are working. You, you're working against a lot of odds, right? With, of course, the, the, you know, different factors that you have to deal with, and you spoke about them here, about physicians leaving the hospital. And I think, and that's why it's important to have this, is that these discussions, is that for everyone also to understand that, you know, it also, you know, we should also be encouraging our, our new partners, the new hospital, to work with, with GMH and perhaps work, work on memorandum of understandings where there's a need for our public hospital to, to, to have services from, from physicians, especially that, that they have, you know, perhaps those are the, some of the ideas that could be, you know, could be explored when you have discussions with them. I mean, you know, you saw the community rally behind when they first opened up in ensuring, and we, we had the mayor's, you know, pass a resolution saying, you know, we should get our insurance companies to, to, to work with the new hospital, you know, which is good. And now you see that happening. But I think we should also rally behind the, GMH and then ask, you know, our partners to, to, to assist in whatever way possible, and this is probably one way that, you know, you could explore with them.
Yeah, and, and I just want to add to that, that, you know, certainly, you know, again, you know, that, that collaboration is there. You know, we have, when, when the patients are at GMH, it's because maybe there's no space at the new hospital. So rather than bringing patients, you know, we try not to put patients at risk, rather than bringing patients to the new hospital, you know, by transport systems, you know, we've, we've opened our, our doors to having them privileged at Guam Memorial Hospital. So, so some of these services certainly could, could be, I mean, their specialists certainly can come over to our hospital. You know, we don't know necessarily at this point what specialists we have because we are recruiting for specialists that, that could go over there, but we would be happy to share that resource too when, when we have a specialty that they need. But, you know, certainly, the door has been open for them, and they've done that before they opened the hospital. They've come over and they've seen our patients, so, you know, I mean, that, that's always available. We just, you know, don't know about, about sending patients there and then being managed, you know, by, I mean, again, there's some, you know, regulatory, you know, they have to be joint-commissioned accredited, you know, you know, those are some of the challenges you want to make sure that.
So maybe down the road, that's something.
Something that, down the road, but for the immediate, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and also, you know, we talk about, you know, the needs, at least on your side of the House, and the resources you need, right? And then that's where we, we get back into the, the, the finance aspect. I know that Benita's not here. We'll probably have subsequent get-togethers. But, you know, there's, there's always been the issue of billing and collection, right? And so, you know, we, I know you did submit some documents to us, and we'll, we'll take a look at that, but it's not really meant for us here to, you know, to, to dig into that and to, to micromanage the way you guys operate, right? It's just to see what the current state is of the hospital, the current financial situation, and see how we could, just like we've always had, respond to, you know, to the needs of GMH. So perhaps maybe, I know we see Mr. Infante here, you know, to, to give us at least a status on, on where we at on finances. I know we're ending the fiscal year this month, and so are we going to hit our, or the, the hospital's budget of this year?
I did not really look into that, but what I have is the financials up to August. If you want to know the bottom number, is that If you wanna know the bottom number, is that as compared to last year, our loss will be $600,000 less, meaning, I look at the financial statement, statement of operations, our loss will be, our losses of August is 9.6 compared to last year, 9.0. So is that good or bad? It's debatable. I saw that the billing has increased from 131 million last year, same time, to 145 million this year, as of August. That's the billing side of the house. But I'm sorry, that's the revenue side of the house, those are the revenues recognized. And when you have that revenue, the billing is supposed to be the same amount almost. But the big part of this is the contractual allowance. This is where we see that, we estimate that we will not collect some amount. In this case, every month, I book half of the revenue. In this case, I book 68 million already as of August, so that brings only our net revenue at 73 million. What I'm saying is, if we get the collection side better, our contractual allowance will be smaller. That means our net profit will be bigger. This is gonna be boring for you guys, could be, because these are now numbers. It's again, we brought the billing people here, and as we discussed in this morning's meeting, we saw that they are, the numbers in billing are high. If you wish to, for them to talk, to speak here, they can, that's why we brought them here.
We did see from the report that was provided, that the unbilled report is about 8 million?
Yes.
8 million, nodding, so is that for, what is the period?
We'll bring Liz this time.
Okay.
Liz, Elizabeth.
Yes, the bill hold report...
If you could just, if you can state your name for the record?
My name is Liz Sineklis, I'm the Acting Business Office Manager.
Okay.
Yeah, so the bill hold report is reflecting $8.2 million. And the period that that covers would be from March forward.
From March to this year forward?
Yes.
So is that a, I mean, for us, 8 million's a lot, right?
Yes, it is.
Is that a typical amount that you carry in your unbilled?
Well, actually, when I first started with the business office, we were at 16 million.
Okay.
So we've brought it down to half in the eight-month period that I've been there. We are still working on bringing that down, reducing the $8 million, because the average should be at least 3.5. Our bill hold days were at 14 when we started, or when I started, we are now at 7.
Okay.
So seven days after patient discharge, a final bill is generated.
Liz, so what are your challenges in getting this even to go lower?
Actually, I think it's just, it's a matter of staffing in both, in all the areas of finance, medical records, the billing section. If we get the adequate amount of staff that we need, we could probably bring it down to the 3.5, as I mentioned. But right now, with the minimal staff that we have, I think we're doing pretty good as compared to eight months ago.
Oh, absolutely, when you say from 16 to 8, I think that's a very good job. And that's one thing you, you know, you're gonna hear from the body here, right, is we've always, every time the hospital would come before us, we would say, focus on the business office, you know, provide the resources they need so that we can get, because we know this is a lifeline, is the billing and collection, right? And so where are you in what you, and how many individuals you need at the business office, or in the billing office, at least in your side? Where are we at?
I've requested for nine total for the business office. Six of them would be with the follow-up, insurance follow-up section and the collection section. Three would be to cover the billing side. And a majority of our volume of claims is with the Medicaid claims, as Dr. Lizama mentioned, that's where the volume of patients are, so it works the same way with the billing.
Sure, when was the last time you got additional support in the billing office?
We were able to recruit two additional staff in June of this year, and I know that our H R department is working on assisting us or supporting us in getting what we need.
So the coding, is the coding staff under your office?
No, that would be under medical records.
Medical records, okay.
Yes.
Okay, June, you wanna continue?
Stay back, just to praise the billing office, I'll read you numbers that are very good. For the last three months, June, July, August, in June, they billed 13 million, in July, they billed 12 million, in August, they billed 13 million, and then there was an anomaly here, oh no, I'm reading the wrong numbers, sorry. I was reading the revenues. Okay, we'll go back again, sorry. In June, they billed 17.4 million, in July, they billed 15 million, in August, they billed 17 million. Just to compare this, when we had problems in billing in October, November, December, when we had the new system installed, the billing in October was 9.4 million, in November, 6 million, and in December, 9.7 million. This is when we were having headaches with the new system. And then when Liz came in, when did you come in, Liz? What month?
February.
In February, we got her to work there. The billing just went up in January 11, in February 10, and in March 12, and then we had an astounding April for 22 million. This is when we outsourced the Medicare billing. She had some help doing that, they billed 22 million, and then in May 12. As an observer upstairs, working in accounting, I see these numbers, and I know the billing problem is not there anymore. If there is, it's only a small problem now, like you had in pharmacy, small problems that will be fixed eventually, because they're doing something with our M I S, with the software, right, Liz?
Yes, with our I M.
And those are gonna go away in a month or two?
Right, as soon as they go live.
Okay, and Senator Torres and Underwood, you can please jump in, okay? This is just, but I do have just one. So on, just to stay on the billing, so you have this 8.2 since May, or March, right? That's a report of unbilled?
Yes.
From March. So what is the timeline that you have to bill? I know, and you've mentioned about billing, yet that you've caught up, but isn't there a timeline with insurance companies, with...
Yes, there is. Well, we have 12 months with our Medicaid office, we have 90 days with our H M Os, and we have 18 months with Medicare.
So with the H M Os, you've passed that?
Right, I've been working closely with the Department Head for Medical Records to ensure that all those with deadlines, that we meet the deadlines in order for us to avoid the write-offs, you know, later on. So we've been working closely to make sure that all these claims go out timely.
Yeah, Ted?
I will say that because of the unusual circumstance of the conversion, the end of last year, we were able to get agreements with the local managed care companies to, for a temporary period of time, allow us longer than 90 days to get those bills out. So I would say the vast majority of all these claims where we've gone over 90 days, we're able to still get those out and have them be...
Okay. Senator?
Thank you. Wow, that's really great news, that you've made such progress, and so it's probably too early to report on the proportion of collections to the billing, right?
Right.
So we would expect, so when do you think we can start trending, the percentage, the proportion of what you're actually collecting from all the bills that you're sending out there?
We talked about this this morning, the way I see it, again, from a person sitting upstairs in accounting, I see that the problem is in the collection effort itself. We were doing great in billing, so it goes back again to how many people do you have in collections, and you need all these people. We have a collection agency, but I don't think we have given them everything we wanna give them. Can talk about the collection agency for a bit, if you want.
Well, we've processed $28 million to the collection agency. We started that in February of 2015. The last referral that we did was last month, which in total was 100, I mean, 28 million dollars. With the Department of Revenue and Tax, we were able to process, as of June of this year, 116 million, totaling 27,000 taxpayers. So, you know, at this point, we have numbers, and as far as collections are concerned, but we also have work in progress, there are plans in trying to recover costs for prior months. The goal that we had was to make sure that all the bills went out the door before we can take further steps in trying to collect.
So when you send out the collection, when you just sent out, the recent, most recent is February? Or June, you said, in June, right? You just sent to the collection agency?
Department of Revenue and Tax, we have sent them a listing of 116.
Okay.
And then the collection agency of Guam was in August.
In August, so what, I mean, after how long, the aging, that you send them out to the collection agency?
Well, we have a billing cycle for all uninsured, which covers 30, 60, 90 days account in as far as aging. After that, our collection agents go in and review the account to determine which outside collection agency we're gonna refer it to, whether it be Department of Revenue and Tax or the collection agency of Guam. So based on the criterion, the balance on the account, the accounts work through the collection agencies.
So would you know, based on the 116 you sent out to Revenue Tax, there's 50, we know there's 50 million in tax refunds, how much of that do you anticipate? I wish...
Senator, so far this year, we have received 7.3. From October to August, we got 7.3 from the garnishment. Compared to last year, we received 3.3 from the garnishment. So it's not that big, but it is.
Okay, and that's something we wanna ask about, the tax garnishments on the procedure and how that works, right? But we'll get back to that, yeah.
Just one more, I was a little bit concerned, Dr. Lizama, when you had noted that you did lose some physicians, and you are still in need of specialty nurses, right? And so for those specialty nurses, those are, those are nurses that obviously specialize training, but the training, is that something that the University of Guam provides, or is that something that has to be provided in addition to their, what they receive from? And who provides that?
Good afternoon, Senators, and thank you for allowing us to talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we are seeing in nursing, but also the great things that are occurring as a result of the recruitment efforts at the hospital. So when you talk about specialized nursing, you know, we get the basic nursing at the University of Guam or any nursing school. However, to specialize, that is done in a hospital setting, because you have to have a combination of hands-on training and didactics, meaning, you know, whatever specialty you choose, you would have to have additional training there in paper form. And so you either have a specialized program in place at a hospital setting, or you contract somebody from outside or a webinar forum to provide that kind of care.
I see.
So it is additional training.
Okay.
And it takes time.
It does.
To get that.
In terms of the supply of just even the basic, the nurses, do you have enough that are being provided by the university? Because I know they have limited entrance, they don't take everyone in, there's only a certain number.
Right. Our basic nursing, we do not have a shortage in that, so that is really nice, that we do get a nice supply from the University of Guam. So we are able to staff our surgery units, our telemetry units, our surgical units and so forth. However, the critical areas in the hospital currently, and nationwide, so this is not unique to Guam, is our intensive care unit, our emergency room, and also our interventional radiology, because those are nurses that are difficult to recruit. We are actively recruiting, we've also, we have travel agents that we are seeking assistance from, however, we try not to utilize, I mean, I try to veer away from bringing in travel nurses because they are very costly. And then also the, you know, you bring the nurses in from a different place, just getting them adapted to the environment is difficult at times, and so will they adapt? That's, you know, we have to see how that goes. But measures that we are taking to combat the shortage, I think we're looking at creative ways to do that. We've actually been working a couple of months to implement a couple of strategies. So one of the successful strategy that, you know, we're seeing success with right now is cross-training. So we've recently revamped some of our nursing management, we've looked at different ways that we can streamline our processes, and so we've, we're actively recruiting in-house and externally as well. So we do, we're cross-training, our telemetry nurses are now cross-training into the ICU, which is our most difficult need. So we have trained since June, we've trained 16 registered nurses already for the ICU, and currently training for additional nurses. So this is a huge deal for us, we've never had, you know, trained that many nurses. We actually have not enticed as many nurses to come down to the ICU to train, because it is difficult. The stress level is higher in a critical care unit. So one of the other things that we need to work on, also, which is really key, is compensation for these nurses, because you're paying nurses the same amount of pay to work in a regular nursing unit versus a critical care unit. So there is no incentive to do that. So we are reviewing ways that we can, we can provide that for our nurses. So hopefully, with some kind of incentive pay, nurses will be more willing to go and train in the ICU and the emergency room and I R. So those are a lot of things that we're working on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Torres, you have any questions now?
Just on the line of the traveling nurses and physicians, would you say that that, and congratulations on having a program that is looking to be a good fix for that shortage, but at present, do you average, do you have a regular pool of traveling nurses that you, or a regular number that you would have to recruit to meet your needs at present, and is that impacting your budget for the salaries of the nurses that are assigned to the hospital?
We've reached out to the travel agents, and because it is a nationwide shortage, even with that, we're not able to attract nurses to our, for one, our compensation is very low compared to what is offered out in the, or in the mainland. And if we were to recruit nurses that are needed, and let's say for our ICU, it will significantly impact the budget.
Ironically, it's low comparable to the nation, but high as compared to our base salary here.
Absolutely.
Such an irony.
Yes.
I will say, and the staff's actually talked about this very particular area, in the ICU where the main problem is, we're currently, we only have enough staff to keep 10 beds open, but we have 14 beds there. This unit actually is state-of-the-art, it's so beautiful, but we don't have enough nurses there. So I know that they have a calculation on what it would take for the number of additional nurses to staff those extra four beds that we have, but we can't have open because we don't have enough nurses. I don't remember what the number is, but...
But just to give you an example, so if we were to keep 10 beds and run a 24/7 operation, we would actually need 30 registered nurses for the ICU. Currently, we have 19 full-time and five part-timers. So we are operating anywhere from eight to 10 beds. And you're right, it is a state-of-the-art ICU, we have a beautiful department, but we're not able to maximize the use. And remember that reimbursement for ICU patients is huge too, so that would really help us in the...
So does that contribute to the high percentage of usage of beds as well, not just in the ICU? You know, because, you know, we do have a shortage, right, of specialty nurses, does that contribute to the, right now, your sense... Does that contribute to the, um, right now, your census is what? Is it a 100 and, 100%
Yes.
On beds?
Yes.
So, if we had more specialized nurses, we, we still have capacity for more beds?
Correct.
That's correct, right?
Correct.
So, it's not a matter of short, uh, shortage of just beds, it's, it's
It's shortage of personnel.
Shortage of personnel.
Correct. Correct.
I think, Senator, even, you know, with adequate staff, we still need, uh, a lot more, um, you know, ICU beds because the acuity of patient has really increased, you know. So, you know, we're averaging more than, you know, 10 ICU patients a day. So, uh, you know, and our capacity is just 10 to 14. So, it's also the acuity of patients. They're really coming in much, much sicker.
Much sicker.
And, and even with the, with the limitations in nursing, with our new medical director of ICU, she's really worked hard in, in moving patients out of ICU that, that, you know, can go to a lower level of care. So, we're, we're moving people along. It's just that the, the patients are really much sicker.
Okay.
New hospital, it hasn't really significantly, our volumes have not decreased significantly. So, maybe because they are ramping up, we're hoping that that's going to help us in the future because we do need some reprieve, uh, you know, staff-wise and...
That's right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, June, so what did you say your, your budget was for this year?
2015.
20, no, 2015, was it, uh, 100, um, 140?
Budget, 2015 is our budget, 140.
140. And so, and so what are you going to, what anticipate to, I don't know if you answered that earlier, what do you anticipate to?
For expenses?
No, for revenue.
Oh. Not going to be 140 million, that's for sure. Uh, I, I think we'll make about 95, uh, 85 on collection and plus the, uh, plus the subsidies.
And so, and but your expenses would be?
My, uh, the last two years, we were spending like 100 million, uh, for expenses. We recorded expenses. So, I think we will spend probably 105 this year. We're talking to 105.
Yeah, and I think that's where the, um, the concern was back then. I think it was a previous CFO, right, that had put that budget together. Um, and that was the concern is that you, your, the estimate of, was pretty high on, on the revenue, and so...
And expenses too.
And expenses, yeah, because you tried to fit, you tried to fit it within that, and, and we're not going to hit it, right?
No.
Okay, so, um, I know that was based on, um, one of the things that they based it on at that time too was, and I think Ted, you, you're familiar with this, right, because you were on the board. But, um, what was based, you know, what you guys based this on as well is that you're going to have a renegotiated, um, contract with insurance companies. Uh, I don't think that, that hasn't happened, right?
No, that does not happen.
Okay, so, you know, 140, you're short. And so, that's where, you know, that's where a lot of the problem lies, right? And also, I believe at that point too, the board and the management team at that point also was expecting Tefra re-basing to happen. I know we've seen some news over the past week about reimbursements for previous years, but the rebasement hasn't happened. So, how, how is the hospital going to address, address, you know, that shortfall and also the 12 or the 16 million, um, accounts payable?
Sure. Um, there's, there's a number of, um, strategies that are in process, um, one of which, uh, was to, um, uh, change the, the very low rates that we had in some areas. So, we took, um, all of our charge master rates that were below the outpatient Medicare rate on the mainland and proposed to bring them up to that level. Um, and that one strategy alone, um, the, um, the gross revenue from that, I think, is about 14 million annually if, if those rates are brought up to just, where our retail charge is brought up to the Medicare outpatient rate. Um, and we estimate that, um, what we would collect of that would probably be at least 7 million. So, that's one particular strategy. Another strategy is to, and heard reference made to the collection part of the process, um, contracting with an organization. We have bids out right now, uh, to have a vendor help us with the self-pay accounts, uh, start a process, um, very quickly after service where the, the people are contacted, they're given, uh, opportunity to use credit cards and to do things online where we currently don't have those types of things, uh, that's available to them. So, there's a number of different things, uh, being worked in, in that regard. I will say, because I think there will be a, a hearing coming up soon in, in front of you folks, we had an initial public hearing of rolling out this proposal where people could come in and, and talk to us about our idea of, of having every one of our charges be able to be at the Medicare minimum.
So, when?
Without going to the legislature for specific votes.
Sure. So, when do you anticipate them submitting that to us?
Um, very, very soon. But I will tell you, in the public hearing that we had, um, it was primarily the managed care companies that attended. And while there was some concern about the, the relative change in some of these rates, and an example was, uh, an intubation in the emergency room, we were proposing a 2,500% increase. And some people thought, well, that's, that's just a very large increase percent. Well, it is, okay. Actually, someone characterized me, and he said, uh, "Mr. Lewis, that's an outrageous increase." Okay. I said, "It sounds like it, but what's outrageous is the fact that our retail charge for that intubation has been $5.08." Okay. Now, an intubation in the emergency room is when, you know, somebody's life is, is threatened and you, you use a tube and you've got four or five staff members trying to save this patient's life, and our retail charge for that has been $5. Okay. So, that's outrageous. We're just suggesting to get it up to a reasonable amount, and in the mainland would be a minimum of maybe $270. Uh, so, by doing, by doing that, and this package will come to you.
Okay, and then, yes, I'm sure we're going to need you here too, and we have a public hearing here?
Yes.
Because we're going to have the same individuals come here
Yes.
And say the same thing. So, when, so can you give me a date on when you anticipate to send that over?
I think it would be within the next month, certainly.
Okay, and then how about the, the contracts with the insurance companies?
Um, that...
And what is the biggest challenge? Because I remember, um, the guys before you had, had, had committed that they would get it done, right? And, but it's not, it's not done. So, what is the biggest challenge in getting the, um...
I, I don't think that there's a real big obstacle there. I, I think we'll have that done before the end of the year.
Okay, so, a signed contract by the end of the year. Okay, that's, um, I think that that's the, I think that's great, because I know that based on our discussions, um, you know, with provisions in there, that I think we're escaping, um, how much is that, Mr. Infante, that with the, with the 8% discount, that, that's 2 million? Is it 2 million?
I don't know.
Is it equated to about 2 million a year?
About 2.
About 2, okay. So, I'm glad to see that by, by the end of the year, we'll be able to, to have, the hospital will be able to...
And, and to a large degree, what we'll be doing is, is just getting up-to-date our official agreement in line with what unofficially we're doing.
Great. Okay, that's good. Um, is there any, Senator Torres, Senator Underwood, at this point? Nothing at this point, okay. I know I wanted to just get an update, a brief update about the urgent care. Um, can we, is that something we can do? Okay, before we, we end?
But this, this is, uh, actually something that, that everyone in the community should be very proud of. Um, and I'll let Zimi and Dr. Lizama talk about it, but, um, you know, there was a lot involved in the planning, um, and, and you guys were, uh, were helping us. And, um, it was finally implemented, um, just in the last few months. And, um, you know, uh, we, we have the capacity to do more, but what, what's occurring now is definitely a help to the emergency room. And I'll let these guys talk about it.
Good afternoon, Senator Belrada, Hospital Unit Supervisor. Um, today, actually yesterday, marks the ninth month of urgent care reopening on January 20. And during that time, we've been looking to collaborating with emergency room on how we can better help the flow of patients. So, we started with a shift of 3 o'clock to, um, 3 o'clock in the afternoon to 11 o'clock in the evening. And during that time, we averaged about 12 patients. That was January 20 to May 31st. So, um, and we, ER patients saw like 1,227 during that period of time. So, when we talked to the ER physicians and also the nurses on how we can better help them, we started opening from June 1st to July 11. We opened a weekend, which was 9 o'clock in the morning till 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And we found out that we only averaged about seven patients. So, um, we changed that schedule again, and they saw a total of 508 patients only ER during that period of time. So, Monday is usually the busiest time of the week. So, what we did was on July 13, we changed our hours again from 12 noon to 10 o'clock in the evening. And that time is our busiest and which we found out that we are better, better serving ER in helping them out. So, from January 20 to, um, August 31st, we have seen a total of 2,531 patients and ER saw 2,851. So, a total of 5,382 were seen between urgent care and ER. And recently, during, um, the past days, we've been averaging about 25 patients a day now for urgent care. And also, our biggest problem is follow-ups for patients who are being seen who doesn't have any primary physicians. So, what we have done was we did like, um, like a one day, like a one-time follow-up with us so that we can, we can see the progress of the patient instead of being them being a frequent flyer. So, we can, we will continue to, um, look at the hours in which we can better serve them, maybe open up one weekend like a Sunday. And, um, when, when we look at this changes, we look at the numbers from ER on, you know, the, their peak, you know, and then that's when we suggest to open up during that time. But so far, I think it has been a big help, not only for the patients, but also for the physicians and the nursing staff.
Okay.
If I may add, um, you know, um, one of the reasons why also we're not maximizing the utilization of urgent care is that when we entered into this, um, you know, urgent care service, the insurance companies really wanted to, um, work with a fee schedule that mirrors the community urgent care fees. Now, there's two components to a hospital urgent care visit. One is the evaluation and management, which is what the urgent care physician charges. And then the other part is the facility. The facility part, the insurance company were not ready to accept the, um, the current facility charges, which would be, you know, the, the charges that applies to all services in the hospital. So, the intent with the discussion with insurance company so that we can get some of their members to come and utilize the urgent care was to limit some of the, uh, you know, ordering of tests out of the urgent care so that it's mostly a evaluation and management, um, service rather than, you know, getting a CAT scan, getting other stuff and so forth, because that falls under, under facility charge that is not, it's, I think it's based on 75 percentile or something like that. But, um, so that's, that's one of the reasons why the utilization has not been, uh, has not been as much as, as it could be. The other, um, you know, part to this is the deductible. You know, when you basically go to an urgent care, you get a, you can pay a $20 deductible as part of the primary care visit versus a emergency room visit, an urgent care visit that requires a CAT scan, that's part, part of the, uh, you know, $2,000 deductible, so members have to pay out of that versus the emergency room side, which technically can be covered under a $50 doct, you know, again, I don't know what their latest, you know, insurance coverage, but emergency room coverage is different than urgent care coverage, so that, that limits it.
Thank you. And Doc, at least I know for the government of Guam insurance agreement, it's also a minimum, it's a, it's a copay. I think it's a 10 or 20, is it? $10?
Evaluation and management, not for the...
Yes, and so, and, and that's where you guys need to work with them, right? In, in
Yeah, yeah.
In that agreement?
Because, yeah, in, in, in expanding it, we, we really can reduce the urgent, the ER service even more.
Okay. So, would that be something that could be addressed by, by the agreement that, that you guys?
That's what we're hoping to, uh, address with the, you know...
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, so, so Ted, okay, just, just one more. I know that the, the billing, I want to thank them again for, for their efforts. Um, I know that you've indicated the amount of individuals you need. Is that budgeted for in the, in this, in next year's, next month's budget?
Yes, and I will say that we have a, a number of temporary employees. Uh, we have, uh, I'm still learning the processes there of, of the, the system, but I think we have five or six people that are categorized as temporary, uh, in there that we hope to make permanent through our process of, of how they're categorized. We have no intent to pull those people out at all, uh, but, but to keep them there. And, um, uh, because they're, you know, we are seeing a positive outcome. Um, and they're, they did have a huge backlog of, of things that they had to deal with, and they've, they've been working that through, which is great. Also wanted to compliment the, I don't think we have anyone here from medical records, but they, uh, they play a big role in, in what goes on because until the physicians sign off on the chart, they can't, the billing department can't get the bill out. And so, there's been a, a big improvement in the work of medical records and working with the medical staff to address areas where charts aren't being completed timely. Um, so, we've got, uh, good people working there too.
Great, okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, I know there's others that we'll, we'll probably get back to in the subsequent hearing. You've been here now for about two hours waiting for the first hearing, so I don't want to keep you any longer. And Doc, you know, you're still in East Coast time.
Yeah.
So, we'll go ahead and adjourn this, um, this hearing today. And thank you again, um, you know, for your service, of course. Um, you started off in real good footing here when Mr. Israel had complimented, um, and so, you know, I know, I've known that, and so that just reaffirms my belief. So, thank you again.
For the record, it's not, uh, we like to rumble about...
That's right, that's right. So, that's right.
That's a big deal.
It is. That's right. Thank you very much. Word, June?
Thank you very much.